I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order today being January 9th, 2018. And the meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD school committee's recording secretary, Leanna Harris. And our meeting is being broadcast live on PBD Access telecommunications. The matters listed below on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed after meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And I want to congratulate our new school committee member and welcome Andrew Aronotis to our ranks. It's great to have you here, Andrew. And I want to congratulate Mrs. Dunn and Mr. Hockman also for their election to the school committee for another term.
I didn't realize we were bifurcated that way.
I know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Well, I'm looking forward to another year. We have a lot of work to do as always, and looking forward to working with you to continue to better our school system. I'd like to first start off the meeting if we could please take a moment -- stand and take a moment of silence. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Levine who has an introduction of two terrific students from the McCarthy School. Dr. Levine?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Leila Najeeb. Leila is a fifth grade student at the McCarthy School, and she is serving as a member of the student government. Leila likes to perform her gymnastic routines, and her favorite book is Extra Credit. She remarked that she loves writing and she loves science. Leila wants to be a veterinarian when she grows up. We share a love of animals then, Leila. So please join us, Leila, over with the mayor. Thank you very much. Jaden Cunningham is also a fifth grade student at the McCarthy School, and as a member of the student government since December, Jaden helped the McCarthy School community raise enough funds and donated toys to provide over sixty students with holiday gifts. Jaden likes to play baseball and basketball, and his favorite subject is math. He is a member of the McCarthy School basketball team. Jaden says that he wants to be a baseball player when he grows up. That's terrific, Jaden. I'm still looking to be a baseball player myself. Please join us, Jaden. If everybody would rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, kids. Thank you very much.
That was a pretty good baseball play.
You say so. You say so. I have film.
Hall of Fame voting is this week, I think.
Do they have film and videos back then?
They did have film, but they didn't have videos.
They had to crank the camera.
Yeah, right. Okay. Approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December 12, 2017 of the regular school committee meeting.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes from December 12, 2017. Roll call vote for approval?
Yes.
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 Present.
Yes.
We have three warrants for approval. Mrs. Cappella?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3669, dated December 26, 2017, in the amount of thirty-six thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-four cents, subject to audit.
Second.
Heard the motion for approval of warrant A, number 3669, made by Mrs. Cappella, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote for approval of warrant A?
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3673, in the amount of two million seven hundred seventy-two thousand six hundred eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents, subject to audit.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Cappella for approval of warrant B, number 3673, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call for approval, please?
Yes.
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 Present.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant C, number 3687, in the amount of two hundred sixty thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars forty-two cents, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cappella. You've heard the motion for approval of warrant C, number 3687, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote for approval, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cappella. There's no objection. We have some students from the PBD High School -- PBD High School graduates regarding the National School-Based Health Center Convention. There's no objection. I'd like to go to that item now.
No objection.
Yep, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Levine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce three students and Carol Champigny, who we were lucky enough to help get to a national school-based health conference. I believe it was in California, right? California. I don't think you'd be asking if it was in Montana, but it was in California. And we were very excited, not only -- I was very excited to meet with them when they came back, to talk to them about their experiences. And I thought it would be really helpful for the school committee to hear how we were represented as the great city that we are, by the great kids that we have. So I'd like to introduce and ask to come up here Carol Champigny, Sarah Simon, Katrina Bettencourt, and Natasha DeSilva. Come on up. And they have a junior at the high school who's here for moral support. Why don't you introduce yourself? Jenna, if you want to get on camera, you can come stand behind here.
We have four, yeah.
I'm going to get up.
You're going to begin, Carol?
Yes. This is so exciting. Karen, more time. My name is Carol Champigny, for those of you who have not known me, and I work for the Student Health Center at PBD High School. And I've been there since we opened, April 2015. And I wear various hats there. So I'm the committee health worker, I'm the office manager, and I'm also the advisor to the Youth Advisory Council. So I'm their adult advisor. And I have to be honest with you, that's my favorite part of the job. I absolutely love these kids. They work very hard in their role on the Youth Advisory Council. Some of the things that the council does, they promote school and community awareness for the health center. They campaign to raise school-wide awareness on health issues that are important to them and important to their peers. They participate in school and community volunteer activities that promote healthy lifestyles. And they advocate for their student health center at the state and local level. This is a perfect example of some of the things that these kids can do. We've gone to the State House two years in a row, and we plan to go again in April to talk with legislators about how important it is to have school-based health centers in their schools. And last spring, we were granted an opportunity by Dr. Levine, which was so wonderful, to bring three graduating seniors to the National School-Based Health Center Convention in Long Beach, California. And he was very instrumental in that venture. He gave the student health center some grant money to make this all possible. We chose three seniors who are now in college to come with us, and there was no doubt in my mind that these kids were going to do a great job. Sarah Simon is at Salem State right now, studying elementary education. Natasha DeSilva is at UMass Amherst, and she's in marketing -- no, financial counseling and --
Management and sociology.
It was close. Management and sociology. And Kat Bettencourt, who is at Wheelock College right now, studying to be an elementary school teacher. So I'm going to turn this over to the girls, and they can tell you about what they learned.
I'm Sarah, and so as Carol said, we flew to California for the School-Based Health Alliance Conference. And this alliance works to improve the health of children by implementing and advocating for school-based health centers. We ran a program called the Youth Track with roughly thirty other young adults, which included presentations and workshops, which lasted from the morning to evening. We never had a minute to relax because as soon as the conferences ended, we would talk about what to bring back to PBD all night long. One example of these workshops would be a healthcare process simulation, which was actually run by a PHS alumni, Gianna Felizi, who is really active in PBD's Youth Advisory Council, is continuing her path on the National Youth Advisory Council. Something we found really incredible was that the presenters were not only adults but also students our age and younger. One presentation we really enjoyed was the LA Trust presentation because their health center was so different from ours, and their presenters were kids who were just like us who actually became our friends. Another workshop we did was an improv activity to talk about healthy relationships. A final activity we did was a four corners activity which opened up conversation about controversial topics, and we learned not to shy away from difficult conversations but to talk through them.
So this was truly an eye-opening experience for us, and as Sarah mentioned, one of our most -- the most influential sessions that we had was from the LA Trust, who are -- who were our peers in the sessions. And we really learned how to create and maintain productive youth advisory councils, as well as how to reach out to our peers and community in the most impactful ways possible. But what we really noticed was the drastic differences in our programs. I mean, they are an established group that has overwhelming support and is strongly celebrated by their communities, and they span actually across the whole district. And they really tackle health-based issues that they see in their communities every day. We are a newer group. We are growing every day, but we are still new, and we have some hoops to jump through as a new group. But we are a growing program, and we're still in that advocating stage, as I like to call it. But while we do advocate, we hope to educate like the LA Trust, and we hope that we can take some of their activities that we saw and implement the education that they do at PBD High as well.
So like Katerina said, we are still in the advocating stage, but okay, I'm going to read from the cards because if I don't, I'm going to spend two hours talking. We are also raising awareness about topics that are really important to us and what we feel is important to teenagers. But we are hoping to shift the Youth Advisory Council and the health center's focus on to effectively educating our peers. While students receive education in health classes about addiction, sex, mental health, teachers are required to follow a curriculum. So there's only so much that they can offer outside of that curriculum to students, and that's where we wanted to step in. So one of our ideas was to create a tough topics fair where students would be educated in safe sex, addiction, mental health, through interactive activities that educate students in a more engaging manner, which this fair was actually inspired by our friends at the LA Trust who did something quite similar. These are all topics that are really uncomfortable for some people to openly talk about, but unfortunately, it is a harsh reality that, you know, many teens do have sex, many teens use substances, and struggle with mental health, and that's something that we really wanted to tackle. And while educating high schoolers, we did think that it's important to also educate middle schoolers through tours during freshman orientation, as well as the eighth grade tours of the high school during the school year. Since the health center opened in April of 2015, students confessed that because of these tours, they only really knew where the health center was and not what it offered. And by having these high school tour guides discuss the services, we could really help with the overall student health at the school and the somewhat noticeably declining freshman enrollment rate that we're having issues with. And I was able to speak to three Essex Technical High School students and actually two students at Bishop Fenwick who decided not to attend PBD High. And when I asked them about their decision to not attend PBD, all five students said that if they were aware of all of the services that the health center actually offered and how it would really benefit them, that they would have changed their decisions really quickly. And I think this says a lot about the need for health centers in PBD and probably in the US. And these tours could be so beneficial to PHS students because the school has so much to offer, and it makes it so much more important that we spend equal time explaining all the aspects of the school because most high schoolers, never mind middle schoolers, are aware of what our schools really do offer. And we do understand that the time is of the essence during these tours, which was also a reason why we came up with the idea of our Youth Advisory Council even just going to the Higgins right here, and even maybe talking to health classes, speaking in club meetings, and just creating some kind of connection with these students to really educate them and let them know what we have to offer them at the high school and potentially change their minds about our school. You know, they're coming from a new school into an older school, and you know, some student ideologies surrounding the high school have changed in more recent years with such a nice building, and I think that the health center really offers a lot more that could really balance that out. And it would really be something special for middle schoolers to know that there are people older than them who have gone through what they've gone through and who have used or are currently using the services at the health center. And all of these ideas we came up with at two o'clock in the morning while we were at the conference. We got so riled up about everything that we learned each day that we just couldn't keep quiet and barely slept, but we got a bunch of ideas from it, and overall, the health center was really, really lucky to have us go.
So I just thought that school committee and the public should know just how well we're represented, not only here in PBD when these kids are with us in school, but when they graduate, and some of the skills that they are able to share that they've learned through their schooling in PBD with other people who are national leaders, peers, and adults who make such a difference in people's lives. These kids are making a difference in people's lives, and they will continue to make a difference in people's lives. And we hope that you bring all of that back to PBD for us. We're so proud of you, kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dunn, I'll turn it over to you.
The mayor knows I'll always have a question. Thank you. That was really a very nice and informative presentation, but you gave us a lot to think about. And I think your idea about doing presentations to the eighth graders is a wonderful idea. And I thank you for talking to those other students because we don't know what people are looking for or what our message needs to be to incoming students at every level. So that was phenomenal that you did that, really. That's excellent, and I'd like to make sure that we do have the Health Advisory Board come in and speak at some point to the incoming eighth graders. And also, I think your words about the tours being too quick, that's good advice for us as well. That's really nice feedback. So thank you. And Sarah, you mentioned something about one of the clinics that you heard about or that you talked to the kids, theirs was very different than ours. Could you tell us a little bit about how it was different?
Sure. As Kat was saying, they have district-wide clinics, so they have individual groups like ours, and then they have a smaller board. So it'd be like kids like us who went to these conferences, and they come back and talk to those individual groups. And they did some more of the fairs, and had, you know, their school had a lot more, those tougher conversations out in the open.
And that's what you folks are recommending that we do, which is another really good point because we should listen to you.
Not all school-based health centers have a Youth Advisory Council, but it's suggested that they do because they really do have a strong alliance with the kids. And so some of these councils, like the LA Trust, is huge, and LA is a huge city, but Oregon too also has many, many Youth Advisory Councils with their school-based health centers.
This was interesting. Thank you very much. It's good to see you again, too.
I just want to make a couple of comments. Mrs. Champigny, whoever picked these three did an outstanding job because Sarah, Natasha, and Kat just did an outstanding job. You represent the city so well, and it's wonderful that you want to give back, even after you've graduated, to come back today to share your thoughts and your stories and your experiences at that conference was terrific for us. It's a learning experience for us. I can, without question, I think I could speak for everybody. One of the proudest moments for me, being an elected official, was when we came together and opened up the Student-Based Health Center. I know it's made a difference in many people's lives. We have caring people like Carol and Allison, so many others that give up themselves. And this took a lot of work. We worked very hard as a school committee to make this happen. I want to recognize Sharon Cameron, our health director, who was instrumental in making this work. We do get contributions from Lahee PBD, we get contributions from Boston Children's, and then of course, the City of PBD. It's a partnership to make this work, but it was such a great investment, and to see you three talk about your experiences and your thoughts and want to be a part of helping students coming behind you is wonderful. So thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for coming back and sharing things with PBD. Does anybody else like to say anything?
So Mayor, I think that this would be the appropriate time for us to commit, that if we can, to send at least three students every year to the national conference. I would like to be able to do that.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. Heard the motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. All in favor?
Yes.
It's a vote. It was easy enough.
Thank you. That's so wonderful.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our new vice chair is Mr. John Olimpio. And our secretary, after a very intense election, re-election, another election that Mr. Aronotis would do, become elected as our new school committee secretary.
Again, they're sitting across.
That's right.
This is the good year.
The symmetry year or something. So let's go back to the agenda. We still have some remaining items. Continued business. Mrs. Dunn, anything new to report on the MSB Higgins Project besides the lot of snow dumped on the Higgins?
There was a lot of snow, and we're working on making sure that the perimeter road stays clear for everyone. And we want to thank all the parents at Drop Off for their patience because everyone knows that road is new, and we're learning a lot about it. And it actually got slippery in an area that no one ever really anticipated, so we're just dealing with it, and hopefully, everything will be under control after the storm. We do have our regular monthly Higgins School Building Committee meeting on the, I want to say it's the 18th, the third Thursday, and this month, we're going to have it at the administration office. So it will be Thursday at 4:00 PM at the main office.
This Thursday?
No, the following Thursday.
The 11th? I'm sorry, what is the 18th?
No, 18th. The 18th, yeah. And again, that's a public meeting, and we will be going over updates on anything with the punch list, you know, talking about any areas that we have difficulties with now that we're into the winter. I would like to report, though, that the issue of the windows, it was brought up at the last meeting, Mr. Amico had a good question about it, they have been treated. And actually, that was preferable to shades, and they're charting it, but when they built the school, it was to optimize sunshine for the classrooms, and there is a period where for three weeks with the, oh god, I can't even think of what it's called, some equinox, the sun is going to be able to reach into the center of the building like it did last year. So kind of like Stonehenge. And we're going to see this year how the coating on the glass affects that. The phenomenon that you saw is something that they knew would happen, they just didn't realize how strong it would be at that time of the year for whatever reason, but the glass is completed, and they're watching it. So hopefully, the time that you had the problem with the sunlight in the gym is not the highest, I'm sorry, the brightest sunlight that we will experience in the building. So they're going to keep an eye on that new coating and see how it works at the brightest time. We learned about it last year. Have you still had some experience with it?
I haven't been over there since that initial time on it. Mr. Amico?
Through the chair to Mrs. Dunn. The last two times that I've been in there, one was in the morning for a game, and we had that sun coming right in. And this past Saturday, it was in the afternoon at a 1:30 game, so it was two different times.
Oh, okay, so it was afternoon as well.
If there is one, could they apply a second coat? Is that something they do, or a second film?
That's what I'm not sure about. They're looking at the actual substance that they used and checking to make sure that it's going to do what it's supposed to. Right now, it's not doing what it was supposed to. So they want us to inform them of things like that. And the, as I said, there was this time period where they knew that it would be very bright in the building, and they were hoping that this coating was going to take care of that problem. And we haven't entered that time period yet. It's soon, though. It's really soon, but that's one of the things we're going to discuss again, just to find out what can they do. Can they, as you say, put a second coat on, or you know, what's involved in improving it?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Public participation, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak, and the microphone is open? Please?
So I think, Mr. Mayor, that the union is coming forward to extol the virtues of the outgoing superintendents. Is that what?
My name is Barbara Brown. I live at 6 Olson Road in PBD. I am a retired reading specialist from the city of PBD, and I'm currently serving as coordinator of special projects for the PBD Federation of Teachers.
And I'm Patty Niswintowski. I live at 1 Richardson Road in PBD. I'm also a retired PBD teacher, semi-retired, and I'm second vice president of the union.
We're here this evening to tell you about a wonderful program sponsored --
Excuse me, I didn't even see you there, Bruce. Sorry, and this is our fearless leader, Mr. Nelson. He was also a retired PBD teacher. Go ahead, Mr. Nelson.
Bruce Nelson, president of the PBD Federation of Teachers, and I'm just here as a chaperone.
I just stuck on by. We didn't even know. Sorry. I apologize.
Well, welcome to all three. It'd be great to have you.
We're here this evening to tell you about a wonderful program sponsored by the American Federation of Teachers. It's called First Book. It targets, First Book targets populations of students who are low-income, children with special needs, and bilingual students. This nonprofit program will provide PBD students with free books. It is a great resource and promotes literacy. We are partnering with the Salem Teachers Union in order to bring this to our students. We need to raise forty-five hundred dollars. In order to accomplish this goal, we have already raised twenty-five percent of needed money. This includes a very generous best bet grant from the PBD Head Foundation, as well as donations from the PFT and its members. Our students will have access to twenty-two thousand five hundred free books, and our teachers will have access to the First Book marketplace, which gives them the opportunity to purchase additional classroom books and resources at discounted rates. We feel that this is a worthwhile community building undertaking which will foster pride in our community while promoting literacy. We look forward, we look to you for your support in this endeavor. Thank you for your time.
If anybody has any questions about it?
Can I just make a motion to receive the pamphlet that Mr. Nelson handed?
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn for approval of the pamphlet that was provided by Mr. Nelson. I did want to say that I met with Mr. Niswintowski, Mrs. Brown, a couple weeks back, maybe a month ago before the holidays, learned about the program, and I was
the program. And I was blown away at the possibilities and the ways that it could help our students. I'm in full support of this program. Would love to be a part of making this happen. And I'm glad that they're here today to talk about the program. It's really amazing, once I learned exactly what it was. And certainly, I want to open up for questions if there's some questions about it. But it's something that I think can really assist our kids. And we want our students reading, and this is a way to make that happen, help make that happen. I'll open it up. Mr. Olympio?
Thank you so much for coming. It's a great program. What's the best and easiest way to donate?
Well, we're going to set up through the city, the treasury, treasury in the city, a bank account. And you'll make your checks out to the City of Peabody. And on the memo line, it will say First Books. And it'll go to the city, and the city will take care of the money aspect. We don't want to be handling the money for that.
So, there's no online component or anything like that, of people?
No, we'll direct them to the city, to Peabody. Because we're partnering with Salem, we've split it, because altogether, there would have been 45,000 books. That's a lot of books that we have to physically spread out, bring, give out, and that type of thing. So, we split it with them. So, we're keeping our funds separate, and we felt it was best to work through the city.
In City Hall or the school administration building?
No, neither. We're looking for a location.
Oh, no.
No, no, for the, for mail-in.
For money. City Hall. We'll send out, we don't have all the information.
Okay, wonderful.
There, there is a, a letter in progress that will be distributed and attached to what will be a donation form. It'll give this information. You know, as Barbara said, you know, the Peabody Education Foundation gave us a great, you know, starter boost. Our members have come forward and are still coming forward with donations. And now, we're reaching out to the rest of the community. And they'll be hearing from us in the near future.
Will that be going home in backpacks, I take it, throughout the, the city, or?
We're kind of more leaning towards looking to officials in the city, maybe businesses in the city, and our own union people.
Okay.
Keep it at that.
Great.
Web sites, the city website and the school website.
Good idea, Dr. O'Beal.
Minimally 4,500. It could be more. The more money we raise, the more money we have to disperse to all the schools. So, the teachers can take that money and go into what they call the marketplace and buy both books and supplies at a highly discounted rate. They can buy a set of classroom books if they need it to teach their children.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming. I just, what was the amount that would get us started on, on this program, on this reading program?
Well, we got $1,000 Best Vet grant from the foundation.
The amount that we're required to raise in order to participate in the program is $4,500. Now, normally, it's $9,000, but as Barbara said, we're partnering with Salem Teachers Union. And so, we're splitting that cost, splitting the amount of books. And what I am looking for, now, there was a very pointed story told in Lynn, they did this last year. And when the children came to get their books, one came up to a teacher near the door and said, "Where do we pay for these?" And the books are free. The money we're raising is not for the books. It's for future resources that our teachers can avail themselves of.
And the $4,500 stipend hypothetically, how many books would we end up splitting? What would be our take here in Peabody?
22,500 books.
But that's, that's separate and distinct from the 4,500.
Thank you. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and pay for this program to our budget for the year.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Amico. I think he beat a couple people, too.[873.87][873.87](laughing)
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this program. Seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. I just want to open up for debate. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, first of all, it's highly irregular that we are questioning people in public participation. We've talked, we've talked about changing that policy for a long time, but I'm happy to, this is, it sounds like a great program. I still don't understand it completely, though. So, Mr., if I may, through the mayor, Mr. Nelson, maybe, or whoever's able to answer. You're looking for $4,500 for the program. You've already received $1,000 from the Peabody Ed Foundation, so that leaves a delta of $3,500?
Well, actually, we have, besides the grant from Peabody Educational Foundation, the membership of the Federation have raised another 600 at this point, another 600. So, we're at 1,600 at this point.
So, you're looking for $2,900, or you need another?
We'll take the 4,500.[940.12][940.12](laughing)
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, because then I hear Barbara saying, again, through the chair, that that's not linked or tied to these 27,000, some odd thousand books.
It's not tied to the 22,500 books. There are 9,000, there are 45,000 books that are going to come between Salem and Peabody if we get into the program. The 4,500, the minimal 4,500, will allow us to give all of our teachers throughout the city a certain amount of money that they can go in and buy resources for their own classrooms beyond the books that go home to the children.
Just for a moment, I'm sorry, I have to step out. My daughter is singing right down in the auditorium right now. She's probably the first betting court that has ever been able to sing. So, I'm going to ask the new vice chair, Mr. Olympio, to take my spot. But I'm in, I don't, you know, I don't vote if it's a tie. But if it's a tie, I vote yes.[996.12][996.12](laughing)
So, through the, the new vice chair, so, the 22,500 books are given to students?
Those are given to students.
Okay, so they get to take them home and use them at, at, yes. And then, the $4,500, the buy-in to the program, allows for teachers to avail themselves to resources that they can use within the classroom. I got it?
There's an organization called First Book Marketplace.
Okay. I was, I just was a little confused that, how it was going to work.
We were confused at first, too. We kept on going back and forth and going to different resources, trying to find out exactly what we had to do. There is a lot to it. I mean, it's not just a simple thing. So...
Yeah.
And if I may, never expecting to come in here tonight, and we're expecting maybe donation, individual donations, but...
I, I'm thinking that the floodgates are going to open this. We've sent three people to California. We're now buying books.
Don't tell Levine he's giving away money like, "No tomorrow," now that he's leaving. I'm going to California. Maybe we could go with them.
I think we should. Maybe come along. I heard this First Book Hawaii. We should check it out.
Through the chair to Mr. Amico, are you, is your motion to provide funding for this program in 2017, 18, right now? Or is it to include it in our budget for 18, 19?
I think, through the chair to Mr. Hockman, I think this is such a fantastic program. It doesn't sound like a lot of money for what we're getting. I want to do it for this year.
Yeah, no, I, I was-
As soon as we can get more books in the, in the hands of our students, I'm all for it. Let's do it.
I, I just didn't, again, understand what your motion was. So, can I, may I, through again, through the chair, Mr. Amico, since there is $1,600 raised, can we supplement that balance of the $4,500 for this year, and then we can look at taking on the $4,500 in total for years moving forward?
That sounds fair. That's fair. Thank you.
Could I ask that if we continue fundraising, can we still count on whatever the delta is between the 4,500 and the 1,600 right now, and fundraise beyond, so that we can supply our teachers with more, more things?
I would be, I would be okay with that.
Yeah.
Or to leave money in a war chest for following, for following.
I think what we said before was that $4,500 is the minimum. The more money you raise, the more access for our teachers.
And we're not sure. We've been looking at different locations that we can, 45,000 books coming in to split between Salem and Peabody, a lot of books. And they're going to have to come in on pallets, be sorted. So, the, you know, Peabody Federation of Teachers, the Salem Federation of Teachers, any student, anyone who's capable of helping will be sorting out books well in advance of this whole, whatever you want to call this whole thing. Salem wants to have, make it into almost like a festival with face painting and things like that for the kids, to make it a very joyous occasion for them, that they, they link literacy books with happy times. So, 4,500 is the minimum we can buy in. I'm sure that, that's why I asked, can we go beyond that and not, you know, paralyze Mark?
Through the chair, I think, I think we can, in this case, and go from there. And Ms. Brown had mentioned how Salem wants to make it a community effort. And I know here in Peabody, we would have, we would have people lining up to do that. And again, anything that supports reading in the city, we should be in favor of. And at this price, this is a steal for the amount of books and the amount of just smiles that'll be on, on kids' faces. I know my son was over at Barnes &amp; Nobles this weekend to pick up a Roberto Clemente book, brought it home and finished it up in, in two days. And, you know, it's all about reading for our kids, and I would support this.
Mr. Amico, I mean, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. Again, this is a great program. There's no one in this room that's going to deny that the more children read and the more access they have to books, the better their educational experience is, the better served we as a community are, or anything else. It's highly irregular for us to not only talk to people who come up in public participation, but then to spend budgetary resources, and then for the public participants to tell us that they are actively fundraising, and we don't know where those funds are going to go at that point.
No, they're going right to the city.
No, no, I understand that. But if there's $4,500 necessary for the program to start, and we haven't started it yet, and we can, I can certainly support $2,900, the difference between what's been raised so far and, and what is needed to start this program. But I would think that whatever fundraising you do go through, and, and I'm happy to hear that you're doing that, would maybe offset the 18, 19 expenditure of what we're going to outlay.
We, we talked about that, that we'd like to build. So, we have, we may not bring it in every year, but every other year, because it is a huge endeavor to bring it in every year. But we, we were speaking of this the other day when we met, that we'd like to have some money aside, Mr. Nelson said that, so we can continue this program.
Yeah. And I'm not necessarily opposed to what you're talking about in terms of making it a festival and a joyous event and needing to spend some resources for that. But if we're spending public resources for a very worthwhile program, I don't have a problem with that. But if we're spending the public resources for other things that we don't know what that is yet, that makes it a little more difficult for me.
I'm trying, I'm trying to formulate how this would go. Is it possible that we keep the 4,500, put it your donation, excuse me, and earmark that entirely for the purchase of the teachers' books, the money we've already raised, and the difference between the two, the delta? And then, if we continue raising, I don't see it as going to be a big expenditure for face painting and things like that. It's just, we may have to rent a place, because we've been looking at different places that can accommodate all these books. It's going to be for probably a good five to seven days between getting the books, unpacking them, setting up, and then cleaning up afterwards. So, we need to think about that, too. So, we do have the expenditure potentially for renting a place, and a few, and I don't think it's going to be a lot of money, but a few extra dollars for the extra things, the balloons or whatever else it is. So, if we earmark the money that you are donating to us, which we did not expect and were very grateful for, for the primary 4,500, and then whatever we raise beyond that, supplement the other things and additional things for the teachers.
I'm going to be honest with you. I'm thrilled to hear about this program. I think it's going to help so many children who don't even have books at home. And now that I understand what, what goes on with that, that $4,500 entrance fee or membership fee, whatever, whatever you need to call it, I think that's really good, considering the fact that you mentioned that teachers would probably buy books for the classroom, or you said a specific word, Barbara.
It's a classroom set.
Classroom set. That's, that's one of the most difficult things that the teachers have to come up with, when they want all the children to read the same, the same book at the same time. And I've seen it in the past where the teachers at the elementary schools have coordinated, for example, in the third grade, one teacher would go out and purchase a set, whatever the title was. Another teacher, and this was with the wrong money, another teacher would go out and buy another set for her, his or her class, and then the third classroom. And then, they would end up trading those books. And we were reaping the benefits of having our students exposed to three very specific quality books chosen by the staff and actually paid for by the staff. I think that this is really nice, because now you're giving them another resource where they can get those at a, at a good rate, and that they would be able to supplement the curriculum in the classroom. So, it really sounds like a great program. With, with our budget, I want to, I do want to ask one question, just to make sure that we can come up with that $2,900. I don't know what line it goes up. I have to ask Mr. Stanton about that. But it does sound like a, a good partnership for us with the PFT to be able to, at least to start this. And as you go forward with your fundraising, the, I don't know if you have to pay 4,500 a year, or how, how that works.
It's actually 9,000 if we did it alone. That's why we partnered.
Oh, okay. So, actually, and it's very nice, too, to be partners with Salem, because we have such similar demographics in so many areas. But just to be able to, to get this off the ground, it's really, it sounds like a win-win situation for everyone. And I'm definitely going to support this. I think it's, it's an important thing, because we really always want to stress literacy and making it, making it happy for kids to see the joy of reading. I mean, that's, that's a really great project in itself. So, everything you've talked about sounds great. And if it's $2,900 from the school department to help support this program, seeing as how our school department is going to really benefit from it, I, we can find $2,900 somewhere in that budget to help. Because those items, they're an integral part of the classroom. I know, especially, we have a lot of young teachers, and they're starting out. And Mr. Amico, and I, I know Barbara and Patty and Bruce can tell us, teachers spend a lot of their own money to build their classroom libraries. This would be a way of us helping to supplement that for $2,900 for eight elementary schools. It really is a good project. Thanks for bringing it to us.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Ms. Carpenter, then, Mr. Amico.
Thank you. I just want to thank you all for taking your time to invest in our students yet again. You're retired, and you're still just, just always, we're always benefiting from you. And I, and I really, truly appreciate it. I would approve this if it was the 4,500, the 2,900, if you come back every year. It is something that, it, it's a tremendous opportunity, and it's such a benefit, and I just appreciate it so much. So, I also want you to ask, to ask you to come back and ask us for help when you need to unload them, when you need space, when you need bodies from our students, when you need people to come and face paint, organize, anything that we can possibly do to help continue this with you, I am all for. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Arnotis?
I have to say, I am thrilled that you two brought this. I actually remember talking to you, Mrs. Brown, about this, probably over a year ago, and how excited you were about this. It is an absolute steal for the amount of books that you're getting, whether it's 2,900 or 4,500. I actually, I lean towards agreeing with Mrs. Carpenter for the full 4,500 myself. It's an absolute steal. I mean, I couldn't, anyway, with my third grade teacher sitting here. Anyway, could never turn that down. But in all honesty, though, this is fantastic. Anything you need.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Amico?
Thank you, through the chair, committee. Ms. Carpenter had brought up a point about unpacking. One of the things that we could also do is involve our students over at the high school who need community service time. And this would be a great way for them to get involved, get back to some of the younger students in the community as well, maybe help them set up, giving out books and so forth. So, obviously, a community service program would be in place here as well for our high school students.
Miss, Miss Murchott, I spoke to Carol last night, and that's exactly what we discussed. And it would be, sometimes they're searching for projects, and this would be terrific. I can't stand.
Thank you.
Great idea, Mr. Amico, Mr. Hockman.
Yeah, thank you. And please don't take any of my questions or comments as being opposed to this project, because I think it is a wonderful- because I think it is a wonderful idea, and I think it's a wonderfully beneficial program for our students and for our teachers and for everyone else. My concerns revolve around the fiscal part of it. It's not something we budgeted for, but I think Ms. Dunn is right, we can find $2,900 in our budget, so I'm not concerned about that. We have space at the high school, so if you needed space to unload something for a week, my concern would be if we're renting out, and no offense to anybody, but if we're renting out Johnny Jones's garage and we're using public funds to do that, which we don't know, because we don't have a, and no, again, not making any commentary upon any of you, because you came here to present us with a program and, as Ms. Nizmetovsky said, not really expecting to receive money. So we don't have anything before us saying, you know, what the breakdown is of where things are going. And we're taking a leap, and it's a small leap, because it's not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things of our budget. I know it's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money in our $72 million budget. Those are where my concerns come from. So if we need space to work through this, you know, I think that working with the administration in terms of finding some space would be beneficial to everybody.
Well, the books are going to come together, all 45,000, and hopefully it will be a location that's easily accessible both to Salem and Peabody, because they are talking about renting buses, no matter where. We had looked at different places, pretty much on the line. Do you have a place?
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Okay. And they're going to rent buses for children to bring their kids over to it. So to ask them to come into Peabody or West Peabody, I mean, as a last resort, I guess we could do it, but it would be preferential to have it someplace centrally located, easily accessible for both cities, because we are partnering. Thank you.
See, so that's, again, so that's where I get lost a little bit. Yes, I understand about purchasing books and purchasing materials for teachers to use in classrooms. I think that that's fantastic, and again, it's beneficial. Some of these other extraneous expenses that are associated with it, if you're raising funds, I don't see why we can't use the funds that you're raising to pay for those expenses.
That's what we said.
Okay.
I had said to you that, thank you for your commitment for the $2,900, and that we would continue to try to raise beyond to meet the other needs, not to use the city money. That would be the buy-in for the marketplace.
Thank you.
Ms. Dunn, real quick, and I believe we have a motion on the floor.
Actually, I was just going to follow up pretty much with what Mrs. Brown just said, that this is the chance to get the public involved and make sure people know there is an active fundraising that will be going on to participate in the first book program, and that those funds are going to benefit the teachers and the students by helping them to be able to purchase books for the classrooms. And your fundraising, this is really probably for most people, the first anyone's heard about it, so it's only going to go up from here. So we're just helping you get your foot in the door, really.
Yes.
And I believe we have to amend the motion. I believe the original motion was for $4,500.
So let's amend it to $2,900 and go from there.
Do you need a second? I seconded the $4,500. Okay. I'm going to stick with my second, so somebody else will have to second.
Second.
Real call vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is a pleasant surprise.
On behalf of Peabody Federation Teachers, parent professionals, librarians, and the students, the children of Peabody, I want to thank the honorable members of the committee for their enthusiasm and their generosity tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may. Before you folks leave, I would just offer, Bruce, if you get stuck with a place, we will clean out the Kylie Gym, and you could have all your books in the Kylie Gym and do all your work there. We could also actually do the carnival there. We could use the parking lot in the field. So if you guys get stuck and you need a place, even though it's in West Peabody, I'll make the Kylie available and we'll get it all cleaned out for you.
Thank you again. Great idea, Dr. Levine. Moving on to the agenda, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Monthly hiring status report, we're in very good shape. We really have nothing to report that is significant. Again, the principals and our administrators and Steve have done a wonderful job in getting good people to our school district and getting them signed up with the appropriate paperwork, the queries, the health insurance, et cetera. So thank you to everybody for that. We have received a donation of $50. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you. Dr. Levine, I did have one question. I noticed that Mr. Norton is leaving, and I wondered, has his job been posted? Or, I feel so bad, he was doing such a wonderful job, we're going to miss him.
We are going to miss him. Mr. Norton has received an opportunity that he couldn't refuse, and he's going back to Essex Tech in an expanded role. So we are sorry to lose him, we wish him well. It does make it very difficult for us in the middle of the year to replace an administrative position like that. I have asked Mr. Norton to stay on as long as 30 days, and he has agreed to that. But he will be leaving us shortly if he hasn't left us already. And we have had this out, and we have resumes in. It's a thin marketplace for this kind of a position.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
We have received a donation of $50 from the Ludus Inn Monumental Incorporated. I'd like a vote to accept.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Roll in a favor.
We had a wonderful donation of Christmas gifts to the Carroll School students from the Peabody House Senior Housing. It really did a great deal for a number of kids and families. I will be sending a letter of thanks to them and would ask you to accept on our behalf.
Motion to accept with gratitude, and you're already sending a letter, so that was the other part of my motion.
Thank you. Just in your packet, you have a letter from Sheriff Carpenter supporting our Chapter 74 criminal justice program that we're going to try to get off the ground next year, although it will be a little bit more difficult without Mr. Norton on board. But we are going to continue to try to get that program for our kids, because kids are interested in it, and I think it would be a wonderful opportunity for them. So that is a letter for you to accept in the packet. I have sent a letter to the Cummings Properties for their annual donation, and a letter to Libby David. I would like to take an opportunity before I close to suggest that this storm was an unusual storm. We had snow, and then we had ice on snow. We had a very difficult time moving all of that stuff. And I would like to thank some people that really stepped up on behalf of the school department. Our city DPW, led by directives and support from the mayor, really stepped up to the plate, and they were with us every step of the way for the big jobs and then the smaller jobs that had to take place over the weekend, last weekend, Saturday and Sunday. I'd like to thank Kevin Kelly, Dave Terranzoni, our director of maintenance, Tony Sepasares, and of course, Tim Healy, who's the director of Buildings and Grounds, who was sick as a dog and still worked through it, Dave Gamache from our office, custodial and maintenance crews, principals, and Ms. Murtagh. If I left anybody out, I'm sorry, but these folks worked round the clock for us. They came in whenever we asked them to come in, they came back over and over and over again to remove snow and ice, to make paths available. It wasn't perfect, and we know it wasn't, but it was about as close as we were going to get without killing people. They were exhausted by the time this storm ended. But by Sunday night, even with the freeze, we were pretty confident that we had the ability to open school and accept students, and we did so without incident. So I would also like to thank Eileen Bresnerhan, who came in a couple of times just to get the buses started, to make sure that we didn't have a problem with transportation. I would like to thank her and her crew as well. So thank you to everybody for your support, very much appreciated, and thank you to the city, who once again came through for us and the schools.
Mr. Amico?
Through the chair, Dr. Levine and Ms. Murtagh. I want to thank the two of you for not wavering. Your decisions were very, you were very decisive. You were ahead of the game, I believe. You called that Thursday and Friday in that delay before any other superintendent in the area, so I just want to thank you for your leadership on that, and putting students and staff safety ahead of everything else. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Ms. Dunn?
I'm very glad that you thanked all those people, because they've done a fine job, and really, the work they do is so hard, and it is bone jarring to be in those plows, and especially the sidewalk plow, and it was so cold, so they really deserve a lot of thanks. I also want to thank you, because your messages are so well-received, that I think you have a following. Oh, don't tell them. Sorry. If there's a possible way of saving those, I'd love to see, you know.
I have to know.
Oh, perfect, thank you, never mind, I won't even say another word.
Thank you, I have fun with it. Thanks.
You can tell.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn, well said, well said, Dr. Levine.
Thank you. And with that, I'm done with my report.
Next item on the agenda, we have written communications, we have a letter from the Peabody Administration Administrator Association regarding success in negotiations.
We'll be in touch.
We'll be in touch. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And then we have a memo regarding Student Government Day for 2018. This morning, elected officials, city officials and administrators, met with the students that are participating in Student Government Day, which is April 12, 2018, on a Thursday. And again, every year, that's a very great program, it's enthusiasm, it's all over the building this morning at the high school, so I was fortunate enough that I was able to attend amongst other people, and it's just a great, great program. With that said, we have subcommittee reports, and we have the Education Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. The Education Subcommittee is meeting tomorrow here at the Higgins at 6:00 PM, and I also wanted to point out that the CPAC, Special Education PAC, has the Basic Rights Workshop. Is that tomorrow?
It's the 16th.
The 16th of January, also here at the Higgins. Thank you.
Finance Committee, Ms. Carpenter.
Thank you. We have begun negotiating with AFSMI and Unit A. We do have future dates set with both. I am actively beginning to set dates for Unit C and Unit B, just with the holidays and vacations coming up and all of the other units, but I will be in touch shortly.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. School safety, nothing new to report. Athletics and wellness?
We don't have a chair.
Nothing new to report. Quality and standards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing to report at the moment as far as an upcoming meeting. We do need to schedule one, but in your packet, we do have the two adopted policies from our last meeting. Those are now part of our policy manual, and I do apologize, the code needs to be put on those so that they'll be placed in the appropriate place in our policy manual.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
The excused absences and then the superintendent's exemption on the addendum to the chemical health policy. We, yeah, actually, we did do a second reading, yeah.
No, no, I believe you, I just.
Yeah, these, the second meeting was December 12, so that's basically when it was adopted. If you'd like, we can make a motion to adopt them tonight. It does say adopt at January 9 on here, so we can do that, but normally it is adopted after the second reading. So I'll make a motion that we adopt the excused absence addendum to policy JA, so move.
Second, on behalf of Mr. Roziglau.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. And then I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the superintendent's exception to the chemical health policy. The code will be placed on that for proper placement in our policy manual. But this was first reading November 28, second reading December 12. So move.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Then liaison to City Council and Advisory Boards?
We have our upcoming monthly parent advisory board meeting. It will be on January 22, Monday night, at 7:00 PM here at the Higgins presently. The agenda includes a presentation by Maureen Rose, the director of our Food Services, and Jared Stanton. They'll be there to answer parents' questions. And also, I am looking into our annual presentation on snow removal. It's always a great topic for the parents to bring information back to their PTO members. I'll just have to schedule that with the DPW, if they can send someone out just to speak with us. They have a wonderful resource. They had prepared a booklet several years ago, and it was excellent. If it's been updated, it would be a great resource for everyone to have. But just having the member from DPW there to explain to parents some of the considerations that go on behind the scenes of why certain areas are, you know, treated in one way, where others, you know, it's so individual to each school, each neighborhood, each area, it's always a very good discussion. So that's tentative, but the definite is for food services and business manager.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Buildings and Grounds?
We will be scheduling a meeting, but nothing at this point. Thank you.
Special Education Parent Advisory Board, I'll be setting up a meeting sometime in February. I would like to invite members from the Brown School Playground Committee to talk at that meeting. Also, too, I'd really like to start talking about April 2, Autism Awareness Day. Maybe we can do something district or city-wide, where everybody participates, all the schools, and maybe throw some T-shirts and things like that. I think that'd be a great thing for us to do. With that, new business, Mr. Arnotis, Juuling.
Juuling. I'm sure this caught your eye when you saw it in the packet. It caught my eye when I saw it recently. Now, I knew what this is, just being in my age group, I had known the term, but I didn't know it was rampant in some high schools across the state. It's a form of vaping, and it's different than what you would imagine when you see vape risers from two years ago. It's not this. It looks like a USB piece, and, you know, it was funny. When I was reading this, I was kind of taken aback by some of the comments from some of the students who find it not to be nearly as lethal or as healthy in any way as cigarettes, when if you do some research on this, you actually find out that one of these things is basically the equivalent of smoking a package of cigarettes, which blew my mind, really. Because there's a sense that when you use the term vapor, you think it's safer, because it's water, and in fact, it's not. And you look through this article, every single kid in it knew what it was, and the adults did not. Today, it's Student Government Day. We did have an opportunity, about four of us, we brought the kids up into Mr. Buckley's room, and he happened to take some out. And it's not just that, there are other versions. As he put it, and I'm sure, I don't know if Dr. Levine, you may, or Ms. Murtagh could speak to this anyway, as he put it, because this kind of came about over the summer, there was a big spike in the fall, and it has decreased, but it's still there. I did have, as we did, and I know, I want to give you credit for catching this a few months ago as well. We had an opportunity to talk to Officer Costa about this, and being visual as I am, he was kind enough to provide me with one, so you all can see. If you look at this and were to put it on a table, your first instinct is going to be, this is a USB. I don't know if you want to share that with the group here. My first thought, seeing that, and I tested it out at work today, I put it on the table and asked someone, what do you think this is? And it looks like a USB portal, and there's all variations of it. all variations of it. So, the reason I put it on the agenda is because I think we should provide a little attention to this. I don't know what everyone's thoughts are on this. I have had conversations with Dr. Levine. I don't know if you want to speak to it. I do have a recommendation for you, but I would be happy to hear from the group first, if anyone has any comments or points to make.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Arnottis, I think this is a wonderful way to start off.
Thank you.
Because you've brought forward something that has been a problem for our schools. It's something that most people didn't even know about. And it's a really big health issue. When, you know, when you read this article, and thank you for providing it, finding out that one of those is the equivalent of smoking a pack of cigarettes is absolutely astonishing, because we've been working so hard to educate people of the dangers of smoking. You know, they've seen a decrease in smoking. People, you know, they're always talking about how many packs a day did someone smoke, so that was a measurement. To know that, especially if a student is smoking, or smoking with these, they're sucking down a pack of cigarettes, that's horrible. And we have our health curriculum. We teach things constantly to the students, and then something like this comes up. The health implications alone are huge, plus the fact that these do not look like a cigarette, or an e-cigarette, or any of the other implements that people use for smoking. And people don't think it's dangerous, because it doesn't look like a cigarette, and it doesn't look like an e-cigarette. It's an e-cigarette. And it's a very cleverly disguised one, too, which creates a lot of problems. And we did hear some really interesting facts from Mr. Buckley. It's something that I'm glad you brought it forward, really.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Dr. Levine, I'm back.
It's magic. It's magic.
Yeah, we just spent...
First of all, Mr. Arnottis, we don't talk about younger generations while I'm still the superintendent. Mr. Arnottis and I have had conversations about this, and I believe that you're going to make a recommendation. If you'd like, I'll speak to it. We have, by state law, a handbook, a student handbook review committee at the high school. And every year, they take a look, they review the student handbook, and make recommendations to this committee for adoption, because policy is one of the things that you also have legal responsibility for. What I would propose is that I write up some language that would be appropriate. I think you, if I remember correctly, this committee approved some addendum language from the high school on vaping. And we need to further identify jeweling, which I will draw up and submit both to the high school principal and this committee. And I would suggest that we allow it to come back from the student handbook review committee. Right now, jeweling would be covered under our vaping policy. We do have vaping language. I think it's under an addendum. We will now include this right in the handbook, and ask them to recommend it to us back to the school committee, when you approve the entire student handbook. So, that's what I would recommend.
Any further comments, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, if I may. To the students that were here earlier, you guys know what this is?
Yeah.
All of you know what this is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's been the consensus. That's what the article spoke about. And it's my generation, certainly Dr. Levine's generation, that don't recognize these as being dangerous. If I can, through the chair, to Mr. Arnottis, to the extent that you know, is it legal for someone under 18 to possess this?
No. And that's a big issue. And I'm glad you brought that up. Because if you look at this, this is it. This is the piece. And I was told, today, actually, speaking with someone, that they now can infuse these little things THC. But it's covered, because they're flavored packs. So, you may not smell the marijuana smell, because it's covered by bubble gum. If you look through, it's flavors that are geared towards kids. That's the whole point of it. And they have now found a way to mask it. So, no, it's a 21 age limit. But as it notes in the article, and what has happened, as we even learned today, parents will buy them for their kids, believe it or not. Older siblings will buy them. Older kids will buy them, and then sell them to younger kids. You can, I think it was $50, I believe you could buy a starter pack, and they will sell them to younger people, because younger people can't buy them. But even that's not foolproof, because apparently, you buy them online, and, you know, it's pretty easy to buy something online. Just putting in verification. So, to answer your question, yeah, it's an issue.
So, just a few additional points. First of all, Mr. Arnottis mentioned that Mr. Buckley had this in his office, or something like this. It was because he had confiscated it, or staff had confiscated it from students. And Mr. Buckley did say to us, while we were talking with him in his office about these devices, that parents will come to him and his staff, asking for the device back after he confiscates it from a student that's using it on school property. So, to the point Mr. Arnottis just made about, is incredible, that it's illegal for a person under 21 to own it or possess it, but parents are seeking to recover the device that their kids are illegally possessing. So, I'll leave that alone. And I just want to make one final point on, that's related to this, and it's tangentially related to this. But I want to give Mayor Bettencourt a lot of credit for taking a stand on recreational marijuana. And you did so in the State of the City address last night. You've done so from the time that this issue has surfaced. And these are related, whether we want to think of them as related or not. But these are devices that can use illegal or legal drugs, that are not beneficial to kids, or people who are not completely developed neurologically, and in other ways. And your stance on keeping recreational marijuana shops out of puberty is, has been incredibly strong, and you haven't wavered on it. And I just want to publicly thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Thank you. Something I strongly believe in. Thank you.
So, I guess, I guess Herbie's Happy Garden is out? Very quickly.
A lot more kids need jewels than you guys think.
Yeah.
We only graduated last year, and kids are sneaking these things in their sleeves. They're using them during class. Social media plays a big part in it, and that's kind of one of the ways you can catch them. And you can't, like, prevent kids from getting them, because you can't get them online. Big things, teachers, teachers have to catch them. These kids are plugging them and charging them in the classrooms, and just, they're really sneaky, but it's really easy to catch them. The students can catch, other students can catch them. And so, I think, reaching out to teachers and really tracing on it is probably the biggest thing we need to do, especially since I do know that kids are putting THC oil inside of their jewels, things, everything.
What do they run on, batteries?
They're rechargeable.
It's chargeable.
They're rechargeable.
Officer Costa today actually told me a story. A kid was wearing a charger around his waist, believe it or not. And that's how he would charge the device. But I guess the big issue with this is that a kid will use it when the teacher's back is turned. And it's so small and quick, that it can slip right into your pocket, and the teacher knows no better, because they didn't see it. And this is just one example. You know, this is, I would say, probably the most well-known. There were so many different, wasn't that unbelievable? I mean, there were...
Looked like pens.
There were pens. You know, a small iPod or something like that.
Yeah, looked like a battery for a phone.
Yeah, looked like a battery. It was unbelievable.
Of different kinds. It was amazing.
Of course, the companies that produce them don't purposely do that, right, to sell to kids?
Natasha, thank you for your comments. Mrs. Caffington, you have one to add to?
Mr. Arnottis, thank you for bringing this forward tonight. I have heard of them, but I didn't know what they all looked like. And to Natasha's point, what, are we training our staff as to what they look like? Are we handing those things out? Because that is a great idea, that they can identify them. Because I am close to your age, Mr. Arnottis, but I didn't know... I didn't know what they all looked like.
It's all relative.
But that's...
How close might that be, Mrs. Caffington?
I have been 29 for a long time. But, but that's a, that's a great point, to train our staff, to send out some handouts of what they look like, what they're looking for, because I didn't know what to look for. So, I appreciate your bringing this forward. Thank you.
Through the chair, I would think that you would agree, that we probably need to do a better job educating our kids as well, right, about the dangers of vaping, and jeweling, and whatever else it's called.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Arnottis, I'll go back to you.
So, I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Excellent motion, Mr. Arnottis. Thank you. I wanted to add my thanks for bringing this forward. Seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote? Yes.
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 Mr. May?
Yes, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, so, if I may, at this point, as we're closing this meeting, are you done?
I just got to add, is it possible to include that in health curriculum?
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Amico kindly and generously pointed out, that it would, I think it's appropriate at this time, that this body make a motion to send a letter to the City Council in support of recreational marijuana bans in puberty. So moved.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. Any discussion? Mrs. Dunn?
So many people have asked me why, why, you know, of personal interest, and I have my personal reasons. But I've explained to them, as a school committee member, I have watched this district work so hard on drug prevention and education. Finding out that all the lessons we teach students, year after year after year, are now going to encompass a world where they are allowed and actually encouraged to participate in the use of what has been illegal substance. They're kids, and we keep trying to teach them how to stay healthy. And we're up against, you know, implements that look like a ballpoint pen, or computer components. But making sure that people know where we stand, I think, is very important. I know the state has said, oh, all the money from the sale of the marijuana is going to go back into education. That is the dumbest thing I have ever heard. Seriously? They really expect us to believe that? Do they say it with a straight face? Okay, our tax dollars pay so much. We fought years ago, we had to fight to get health teachers for each elementary school, because that's where you start this education. We've got a curriculum. Our teachers work very hard. Our staff work hard to educate kids. One of the issues at the high school is when marijuana was decriminalized, kids were smoking pot in the parking lot, in the bathrooms, using e-cigarettes, and saying, well, what's the problem? And oftentimes, when their parents were brought in, they're like, well, what's the problem? I'll be honest, I don't argue with the decriminalization, because I think that people need to be able to be educated, and to, you know, get on with their life. But we know it's a gateway drug. My pediatrician stresses this consistently, consistently, consistently. And just, just to see how, it just lies in the face of everything we have been doing to educate our children. So, I'll definitely vote in favor of a letter to the City Council, and give you that support.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the chair of the committee. And this doesn't, this doesn't, medicinal marijuana will still be available.
Oh, different.
So, we want to clear, clear that up. But I agree with Ms. Dunn. We've worked so hard in this city, and across the North Shore. As an educator myself, I can tell you for sure, marijuana is a gateway drug. I've seen it. I've taught at the high school level, I've taught at the middle school level. It certainly is a gateway drug. My father-in-law worked for the FBI for many years. He can tell you, it's a gateway drug. It's ruined lives. Drugs have ruined lives. We've seen it with the opioid epidemic here, on the North Shore. And I just think that we really need to come together here, and support the mayor on this ban.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. And I could speak for hours about this. I won't. I think all three of you summarized it very well. I just think it's important to vote for the city. It is a difference, and you said it, Mr. Amico, there's a difference between medicinal marijuana, which is for treatment of cancer, severe cases of arthritis, and other ways to treat those that are suffering from some illness. That's very different than recreational marijuana, that you could go down to a corner store, and, you know, they're going to be aggressively trying to sell their product. It'll be in the windows at your corner store, and at your neighborhood store. And I just don't think that's what we, as a city of puberty, want and deserve, and our kids, our families, our residents. I don't think that's the right thing for our city. So, thank you for your support on that. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We do have one additional, thank you, Mr. Hockman. We do have one additional item, Dr. Levine?
Thank you. One quick comment on, on the marijuana issue. As you know, it happened in my family. I support Mr. Amico, and when he says it's a gateway drug, it is a gateway drug. And for those people that would argue about the research on the other side of it, we could argue both sides for hours and hours. I would simply say, if it looks like a duck, and walks like a duck, and sounds like a duck, what you've got is a duck. And marijuana is not good for you. It's simple as that. I am going to recommend at the next meeting, and I would have recommended it tonight, but my paperwork is, the automobile gods are very angry with me. And we have had car trouble in a variety of different ways. I have the wrong car, all my paperwork's in the other car. I would have had copies for you. I am going to recommend to this committee, at the next meeting, that you approve the reinstatement of the position that was cut a few years ago, in the business office. It's actually in Human Resources, but for reasons that I'll explain, it has taken over a lot of the business office, or it was a lot of the business office stuff. We have a business office of two people that's extremely overworked. It is starting to impact the way our reputation, the way that we can service our people, and the speediness with which we can service our people. We have two veteran, wonderful clerks in that office, who work round the clock, in order to get the job done. The job is extraordinary. We have already had almost $10,000 in overtime attributed to that office, just to make sure that we can get everything out that needs to get out in a timely manner. And even at that, we struggle. We are burning those people out. The position that was cut is a union position, union clerk's position, that did health benefits and retirement. The health benefits and retirement are now, without any further help, sitting in the business office with those two ladies. With those additional responsibilities, it's impossible for them to get the job done that they need to get done, on top of payroll, and all of the other things they do in that office. They never complain. They simply do the job. When they have to get more advanced work done, and ask for overtime, they do. We approve it. But it's not a good system. We need that job back. Now, it is a clerk's job at $26 an hour. It will cost us less than half a year's salary to put that job back. That job needs to be back, not simply because of financial considerations, and there are financial considerations, I understand that. It needs to be brought back for the efficiency and effectiveness of the school system, and what the services that we provide to our people. We have people, through no fault of anybody, who have been waiting over a year to understand what their retirement benefits might be. Because for people who aren't retiring immediately, they get put to the back of the list. And from what I understand, Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, for each request for retirement, as to what their retire, staff members' retirement might be, it takes about 10 hours to put together that information?
Dr. Levine, I am becoming a little uncomfortable. This isn't on our agenda, I do think. I'm getting a little, I don't think we should be really touching on this at this meeting.
On the new business, huh? Okay. All right. So, I'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, please do. I mean, I don't want to, I just become a little uncomfortable. I don't want to be violation of the record, but I'm going to stick to the agenda.
Never mind.
Any, any other comments?
Yeah, while we're talking about the next, the agenda for our next meeting, can we please put on the consultant for the change in school start times?
She will, through the chair. She'll be here to make a presentation.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about that, but I just...
It's okay. You've gotten me a couple of times this week.
No, we just, we just had a meeting last month regarding the open meeting line. I'm just very, a little gun-shy on that, so. Mrs. Dunn?
Definitely, it's not on the agenda, but I just would like to put it out there, that Mr. Arnottis will have to go to the chartering the course from the M A S C. And I'd just like to ask everyone, if we could try to coordinate, and perhaps go with him to that course, and, you know, show his solidarity. And it's always good for a refresher course. And just let us know which course you want to go to, and we'll see if we can all go together.
Thank you, Mr. Amico.
On that note, Mr. Kusia said he may be able to set up a chartering the course here in puberty for us, so maybe we can check in with him. I think he said he would make the drive up. up.
Yeah.
Might save us a trip.
Mr. Arnotis?
I know Marge was looking at some dates for me, but that's possible, that's 10 times easier.
Great, any other items? Okay, next agenda, we set the regular course.
Motion to adjourn.